Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the, this is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask our city clerk, Jody Wykoff, to please call the roll. And Clerk Wykoff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Folcher, Kenny Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. So we have all council members present. Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda is item 3.1. This is Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Fisher, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you very much. The next item that we have on the agenda is item four. This is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking right now, please go ahead and raise your hand. Do we have a sign in sheet? Or are we going to stick with? I can have hands raised. Okay. Thank you. As Clerk Wykoff noted, we do have a public hearing this evening. If there's anybody that's interested in speaking during public comment, please raise your hand now. Okay. Please come forward and state your name and this is just public comment. All right, thank you. No worries. And if there's anybody online that would like to provide public comment during the general public comment, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand, or if you're on the phone, hit star nine. All right. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is item 5.1. This is a public hearing. This is required post adoption public hearing for ordinance number 0302022B, adopting interim zoning amendments to chapter 22.24 Monroe Municipal Code, tourist commercial zoning district. We're going to turn to our planning manager, Kate Turtolo. And Manager Turtolo, can you please hit your microphone so that I can tap the right one for you? Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. On October 25th, earlier this year, the city council declared an emergency and adopted with a super majority an interim regulator interim amendments to Monroe Municipal Code, chapter 22.24 tourist commercial zoning district, as Mayor Thomas explained. The action enabled the ordinance 0302022B to take effect immediately upon adoption in order to prevent vesting of development rights for projects inconsistent with the tourist commercial zoning district land use and land use designation. This ordinance approved interim amendments, removing all government facility land uses from the land use table. The agenda bill in the council's packet provides, oh, thank you for bringing this up. The agenda bill in the council packet provides a brief history of the tourist commercial land use designation, which was adopted in the 2015-2035 comprehensive plan, followed by amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code establishing the district. And then recently, we've been receiving various inquiries, actually, pre-applications for different uses on different properties within the tourist commercial zone. And several of, and then also in your packet includes the various options that the council heard at the October 25th meeting when they decided to take, adopt the interim amendments. Up on the screen, it shows the top one is the comprehensive plan land use designation. It includes both properties within the city of Monroe, as well as our unincorporated urban growth area, and a description of the land use designation. The map on the bottom includes the specific properties that are within the city of Monroe Zone Tourist Commercial, and then the description of the purpose statement for the zoning district. Per the Growth Management Act and other state statutes, the council is required to hold a public hearing within 60 days of adopting the interim regulations, allowing the public to comment on the interim regulations. This afternoon, we received three letters, three written letters concerning this matter. These letters have been forwarded to each council member via email, and I believe there's a hard copy in front of you this evening. And because we have not had a full opportunity to really review these documents, staff is requesting that this public hearing be continued after you start taking public testimony this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank, thank you very much, Manager Turtolo. Turn to council before I open up the public hearing. Do you have any questions for Manager Turtolo? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. L, could you clarify the last statement you made about your staff is recommending?
Yes, so we were hoping we could have action this evening, but because we received three letters that came in actually like three, after three o'clock this afternoon, we were requesting that the city council extend the public hearing to your next regular meeting. I believe it's on December 13th, and the city clerk, Jody, has prepared a revised guidance for you this evening.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council members? All right, we're going to go ahead and open up the public testimony version of, portion of this public hearing. If you're interested in speaking on this matter, I'm going to turn first to people who are in the audience. If you're interested in speaking to this matter, please go ahead and raise your hand. Please come forward to the podium. And please state your name and your general area of residence or address, if you are associated with a firm, would be acceptable as well. And I'm just modifying the camera, so just a second. All right, and then you'll have three minutes. And Jody, do we have the timer set up?
And would it be beneficial just to, as a point of order, to actually have the public comments at the next hearing for this, or is it acceptable to have it now?
It's acceptable to have it now.
Okay, that's fine, just for indifference to everybody, and they didn't want it.
Yeah, if you wanted to come back next week, you could. If the council makes that motion, right now, the council's been provided an opportunity to make a motion to extend. That is a recommendation from the staff. In the event that the council opts not to do that, this would be an opportunity to provide the best money.
Great.
Okay. Great. And before we proceed, I just want to make certain, Zach, do you have any disagreement with what I've said?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, your comments were accurate procedurally.
All right, he's our attorney.
Okay.
So please state your name and
I'm Charles Depp. I'm a broker with Remax, and I'm the one that's responsible for actually selling first airfield from Monroe Airport. I work with Remax or the brokerage that I'm with is Remax Northwest, and we're out of Seattle, Washington.
Good, thank you, go ahead.
All right. So I'm basically responding to the interim zoning amendments for tourist commercial that affect first airfield, and the council members may not be aware of some of the huge challenges to develop this property. And while there are many in deference of the time, I'll just give you a couple. The first is that there's a large gas supply line that bisects the property owned by Williams. There is a 60-foot easement on either side of this gas line in which no development can occur. And because of that, it effectively reduces the allowable area, and it precludes many type of development, a lot of the development in the kind of tourist realm. The second issue is that the runway and the associated buildings are about 15 to 20 feet below the level of the street. And what that means from a development perspective is monumental development cost. Some of the development or a lot of the development requires that the height of the buildings that are built be at the same height as the road. So to raise 15 to 20 feet, you're going to have massive amounts of fill dirt required to bring the development even with the surface of the road. And that's, that's only an assumptive fix, because we don't even know if filled dirt can be, can be moved to that particular area, and if filled dirt solution is even, even possible. In addition to that, if development was done down by the runway, a pumping station, a sewage pumping station and a connection to a new sewer would be required all along the road. Again, all of these are significant development requirements that a buyer would have to take under. The last issue with the property is it's encumbered by wetlands, and don't need to say too much, but wetlands serve as a major impediment to any developer there. Now, with respect to a tourist-like development, entertainment, entertainment centers or hotels, we've had two hotel developers actually take a look at the property. One actually represents the 10 largest hotel developers in the United States. The other one is a large hotel developer here locally, so we think we've got a pretty good perspective on is that site available and applicable to a hotel development. And while both of them took a look at the property, both of them passed saying it was just too difficult to develop. The site didn't even meet their minimum requirements. They didn't send it to their staff or have any consultants take a look at it. Among the criteria that the hotels need is to, the final development to be even with the road. And of course, having a, having a large gas pipeline is just extremely prohibitive for them to do it. Worthy of note here is that cost was not a factor. They didn't say, hey, it's too high, or if you cut your price in half, yeah, we could go ahead and develop. They just said, no, the property is not developable. And that's from 11 of the largest hotel developers in the area. In addition to that, we had
And I, you have hit the three minute mark. I'm sorry, just need to ask you to wrap up in like five seconds, if you can. I know you submitted comments, though.
Yeah, so I'll wrap up in five, five seconds. Is it that basically from a development, from a from amusement park perspective or from a hotel perspective, it's just not a developable piece of property. We just can't do, and it has nothing to do with price or anything like that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the time and your consideration. Good evening.
Thank you. If there's anybody else that's interested in speaking on this matter that is here in the audience, please raise your hand or come forward. All right, seeing none, if you're online and you'd like to speak to this matter, please go ahead and raise your virtual hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, and I have Vicki Orico on, on the attendees list. We'll go ahead and bring Vicki forward. As we're bringing people forward, you'll, you'll hear, you'll, you'll see that you'll, things will go quiet for a moment. You'll be asked to be, to come into the panel. Please hit yes when that happens. And then I'll go ahead and let you know when you're in the panel. Vicki Orico, I do see that you are now in the panel. Please go ahead and take yourself off mute and feel free to turn on your video if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So please go ahead and state your name and area of residence or business association, and then you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Vicki Orico. My law firm, Johns Monroe, Mitzanagan Kaloshkova, represents the Havics. The property owners affected and frankly significantly hurt by this ordinance. We asked you to, we ask you to strongly consider the ramifications of this ordinance and repeal it rather than make it permanent. The ordinance is clearly intended to do one thing and one thing only, to prevent Havics from selling their property to Snohomish County Public Utilities District for an administrative building and regional electrical grid maintenance facility. This is the second attempt on the city's part to block the sale, the first being illegally flawed code interpretation determining that the Snohomish PUD facility is not allowed in the tourist commercial zoning district because it has some outdoor storage as an accessory use. Perhaps the city was not confident in the defensibility of their code interpretation and felt the need to double down with this ordinance. Enacting this ordinance is equally questionable on several legal bases and is likely to result in protracted litigation and significant damages to the Havics. The ordinance repeals only the citing of government facilities, such as government maintenance and storage facilities, as a permitted use. It makes no other amendments to the code. This is clearly and overtly intended to terminate the sale of the Havic property to Snohomish PUD. The city itself admits in the ordinance that it decided to amend it only because it heard of the proposed sale and use as a government facility. The ordinance goes on to recite the desire to have the Havic property used for purposes related to local tourism, such as lodging, entertainment, or event facilities. As you've just heard, this desire is economically unattainable. The city has now so significantly restricted any practicable use of the Havic property that it amounts to an unconstitutional taking of the Havic property for public use. It is also a violation of the Havic substantive due process rights. There have also been procedural violations of the Growth Management Act. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, the ordinance violates the city's statutory obligation to cite essential public facilities, those that are typically difficult to cite, but are necessary and important to the provision of public systems and services. Snohomish PUD and its administrative building and regional electrical grid maintenance facility clearly meet that definition. The GMA prohibits the city from using its comprehensive plan and development regulations to preclude the citing of such essential public facilities. You know, at the end of the day, governments must treat their citizens in a fundamentally fair manner. Amending its zoning to specifically prevent the sale of a property for an essential public use is not only unfair, but denies the Havics valuable property rights. This action will have lasting effects on the city, its residents, and its businesses. It's wrong and it's unlawful. Havics asks the city council to repeal the interim ordinance and work with us toward developing the Havic property in a manner that meets the needs of the city and the greater community. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move you back to the attendees list. And then we have David Toyer in the attendees list that we will bring forward into the panel. And again, if there's anybody else that would like to speak on this matter, please go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine if you're on the phone. David Toyer, you are now in the audience, in the attendees list. I'm sorry, the panelist list. Please go ahead and take yourself off mute, and also if you'd like to be on video, turn on your video.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, David Toyer. With Toyer Strategic Advisors, our firm's located 10519 20th Street, Southeast, Suite 3 in Lake Stevens, Washington. I'm here tonight also to follow up on the previous two speakers that have discussed first airfield and the Havics property in this interim ordinance that the city adopted. We did also submit written comments to the record this afternoon, one of the three sets of comments you received. I will say, we have not studied the site to the level of detail that Charles is aware of, some of the constraints and challenges of the site from the various different developers that they've talked with during attempts to sell this property. But we're familiar enough with, with the property as land use and economic development experts to be able to say that the site is challenging nonetheless. And when we took a look at the zoning code and the allowed uses, what is actually allowed there is really not practicable, given the site's constraints, nor is there really a very complimentary and robust package of uses that would, would truly allow for some sort of semblance of development to occur in the long run. Nonetheless, the development options that the community or the city is, is expressed that they want as a purpose of this zone aren't really viable in the marketplace today. And we think that that causes a substantial amount of problems, especially when you consider that the city council did take the uses out of the code that are viable through their action with the interim ordinance. Now, whether or not that was an action that was legal or not legal, I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to go there, but whether or not it was fair or not, I think is an important conversation to have as a city council, because fairness is not only an issue for your citizens, but it's an issue in economic development in general. We work on a substantial number of projects around the United States. We've helped communities attract projects. We've also led the search efforts to pick locations where people want to locate projects. And what I will say is, is that there is nothing worse than sending a message of unpredictability and a lack of fairness to, to the economic development world to crush economic development dreams in a community. And in adopting this interim ordinance, that is a message that you put out there, which is that if you come into the city and you're communicating on a project through a pre-app, through a code interpretation or any other mechanism, and we don't like your project, we will take action to make sure your project can't move forward. That's a substantial amount of uncertainty and unpredictability that projects just don't want to bear. We, like the other folks that have testified, and I'm wrapping up right now, also encourage you to repeal this interim ordinance. And if the city wants to engage in some broader discussion of uses, that discussion of uses should not be done with a moratorium or a threat of a moratorium over this property to really force the Havics into a situation that they may not want to be in, nor that's market viable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. I was just going to ask that you wrap up. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move David back to the attendees list. And the next person that we have who has their hand up is Shanna Havic. So Shanna, we're going to go ahead and bring you forward into the panelist list. Shanna, you're now in the panelist list. Please go ahead and state your name and association for the record, and then we'll start the three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Shanna Havic. I am part of the Havic family from Monroe, Washington. I just wanted to come on as the, as the representative of the family and say that we agree with everything that's been said by our subject matter experts on our behalf. What a hardship this has been for our family. All of the Havics are Monroe High School graduates, and even our sons are Bearcats. We aren't people that you don't know. We've been part of this community and a partner with the city for over 45 years. Our hope is with the council's help, the city Monroe will do the next right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anybody else that is interested in speaking on this matter in the attendees list, please go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone or raise your virtual hand. Shannon, we'll move you back to the attendees list. Okay, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll turn to council. And I'll note that Manager Turtolo's got a, an adjusted requested action for council to consider. So the request this evening is not to close the public testimony or the public hearing, but rather to continue this to next week. So that is the motion that is placed before you this evening. So I turn to council. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I move city council to continue the post-adapted public hearing for ordinance 0, sorry, for number 0302022B, the city council's next regular meeting at 7:00 PM on December 13th, 2022.
I have a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Folcher for the requested action as shown on the screen right now. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you to everybody who commented. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's a consent agenda. So I turn to the council. Anybody? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Kenny with a second from Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is new business item number seven, starting off with 7.1, confirm reappointment, planning commission position two. And I'm turning now to Lance Bailey, Director Bailey. Go ahead and hit your microphone, please. All right, go ahead, sir.
Let me get to the agenda item, I apologize. So before you, this evening is, is a recommendation to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kelsey Dawkins to the planning commission for a four-year, for a continuing four-year term. Kelsey is fairly new to the planning commission and has been providing a lot of valuable input as a business owner and a resident in close to the downtown area. So staff is recommending the reappointment.
Thank you.
We're confirming the mayor's recommendation.
Thank you. The, thank, I'm requesting that council approve or confirm the appointment of Kelsey to this planning commission position. It seems that Kelsey was not able to make it this evening. I don't see her in the attendees list. Kelsey, if you're in the attendees list and you just have a different name, please raise your hand. Okay, so it's not Paul Ryan, so that's good to know. So I would say that she's been doing a really good job on planning commission, and I'm respectfully requesting your confirmation of her appointment. I turn to council. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
So I'll move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kelsey Dawkins to the planning commission position two before your term ending, excuse me, ending 12/31/2026.
I have a motion, motion from Councilmember Davis, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action in new business item number 7.1. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be new business item number 7.2, confirm reappointment, salary commission position one. And I turn to Director Werthen. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight before you is a requested action to move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Brian Lipsy to the salary commission position one, a three-year term ending 12/31/2025. Mr. Lipsy has been with me for, even when we were doing meetings remotely, and he hung through this group, even when we didn't have a quorum. So he has made, I believe, all meetings. I don't have anything else, Mayor, but I will pass it back to you.
All right, thank you very much. So I think most everybody on the, on the council knows Brian Lipsy. He was not able to make it this evening, it looks like. Oh, he's on? Oh.
Yeah.
Where?
Virtually.
Oh. Oh, that's interesting. Okay, Brian, you, he's not on that screen, right? Okay, Brian, you're on, you're on this screen, but you're not on the screen that's in the room. So so Brian, can you go ahead and introduce yourself briefly and just say a couple of words as to why you're interested in continuing on serving, continuing and serving on the, in the salary commission? Go ahead.
Well, so my name's Brian Lipsy. I served for the last year or so on the salary commission, most recently as a chair. And I found it fun, interesting. It was interesting seeing how the surrounding municipalities, they compensated their council members and their mayor and the different organizations they do. I just want to continue on because I, I find the work interesting, and I find it nice to be able to help and contribute back to the city.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions or emotion? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Brian Lipsy to the salary commission position one, a three-year term ending December 31st, 2025.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the requested action in new business item number 7.2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody, and congratulations, Commissioner Lipsy, for continuing. Brian, we're going to go ahead and move you back to the attendees list, and we're going to go ahead and move on to the next one. We're going to move to new business item number 7.3. This is the Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB, position number five for consideration for reappointment. I turn to Tyler Christian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The next reappointment that we have is for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Ms. Sally King is a current serving member in position five. That is a term ending December of 2022. Staff and the mayor met with Sally on November 29th, 2022, and she has expressed interest to continue on. And the mayor has chose to bring that reappointment to you for position five, a term ending December 2026. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you, and Ms. King is in the room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sally, will you please approach the podium? Thank you. All right. Could you please go ahead and just introduce yourself, reintroduce yourself to the council and say a few words as to why you're interested in continuing?
All right. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Sally King, and I am, next year, I'll be a 30-year resident of this community. So I have a deep love for the community. I have appreciated many of the things the city has done, and it's been very gratifying to be a part of what's been going on for the past four years. We've done some things that I, I think we should all be really proud of, and I'm looking forward to, you know, what's next?
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate a lot of the very visible things that EDAB has been doing, especially with the monument signs and also with the most recent gateway signs that have gone up in downtown, among many, many other things. So thank you for everything you've been doing. Councilmembers, any questions or emotion? Councilmember Folcher? Councilmembers, any questions or emotion? Councilmember Fulter? Go ahead.
I've worked with Sally on the E DAB and in a number of community things, so I would like to move to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Sally King to the Economic Development Advisory Board, position five, with a term ending December thirty-one twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulter, a second from Councilmember Hanford for the requested action in new business item number seven point three. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Board Member King, for continuing. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is item seven point four under new business ordinance number zero three one twenty twenty-two, amending chapter nine point oh three M M C Civil Protection Ordinars, Ordinars, do you like that? Orders. Administrator Knight, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. In twenty twenty-one, the state legislature consolidated provisions governing various categories of civil protection orders that were scattered throughout the revised code of Washington, including chapter twenty-six point five zero R C W. House Bill thirteen twenty repealed chapter twenty-six point five zero R C W and other related R C W chapters into a new chapter, seven point one zero five. The changes require an amendment to the city's local regulations to ensure consistency with current state law. Portions of the law have already been become effective in July of twenty twenty, and the city should amend its code for consistency.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from the council or emotion? Councilmember Fulter, go ahead.
I move to accept the first reading of ordinance zero three one twenty twenty-two, amending chapter nine point oh three M M C State Criminal Statutes, adopted, amending the city's criminal code to adopt the reference by reference the current Washington statutes governing civil protection orders entering legislative findings, providing for severability, establishing effective date.
Do you have a motion from Councilmember Fulter, a second from Councilmember Davis? Any discussion on the motion? This is for the requested action in new business item number seven point four. Any discussion? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this would be new business item number seven point five, interlocal agreement I L A between the Monroe School District, M S D, and the City of Monroe for School Resource Officer, S R O Services. Turn to Chief Charlie. Chief Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm here before you to ask to amend the interlocal agreement I L A between the Monroe School District and the City of Monroe for School Resource Officer and our program. Previously, on October thirteen twenty twenty, you approved this M O U between the two for the twenty twenty-two and through the twenty twenty-three school year. Due to legislation passed in twenty twenty-one E S H Bill one two one four, school districts must now negotiate annual agreements when desiring to contract with law enforcement for School Resource Officer Services. I'm requesting and move that the City Council approve the updated S R O memorandum of understanding with the school district and authorize the mayor to execute the M O U on behalf of the city. This has been vetted by our city attorney, Mister Zach Well, as well as counsel for the Monroe School District. And by statute, an entered agency agreement may only be voted on by the city council's governing body, which is the council. The city is committed to programs which support youth in our community. Our School Resource Officer Program being an outward commitment to this effort, the city has partnered with the Monroe School District for more than twenty years, staffing and S R O to support district-wide safety, security, and community-wide youth development. Continuing on the next page of the agenda, some of the highlights and the position is where we're at now. And coming to an agreement, a summary of the substantive changes to the agreement include several bullet points which are listed within the agenda. We feel that we have met all of those asked by the that came out in legislation, and again, having been vetted by council. In order to continue S R O services into twenty twenty-three, the City Council will celebrate and renew interlocal agreement with the Monroe School District. The alternatives to voting for this are voting against the motion, thereby discontinuing the agreement or provide staff with additional information. As I said, this is time sensitive, and this is our last meeting in this this year. With that, I believe all the other information is contained within the agenda bill available for any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. I turn to council. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been pretty vocal about this partnership and glad to see we're here, and I understand that the changes were there, and that we gotta do it annually. I'm glad to see we got it. So I'm gonna move to approve the S R O memorandum of understanding with the Monroe School District and authorize the mayor to execute the M O U on behalf of the city. I'm substantially the form presented to council together with such minor revisions as the mayor may deem necessary and appropriate.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Kenny for the requested action in new business agenda, item number seven point five. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions, motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be the new business item number seven point six, amend Monroe City Council Rules of Procedure for First Review. I'm gonna turn to our clerk Wykoff. And clerk Wykoff? Go ahead.
Thank you. I have to rearrange my desk here. Go from note taking to talking.
I was doing the same thing with cameras.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jody Wykoff, City Clerk, for the record. Before you this evening is some proposed amendments to your council rules of procedure. As you know, last, earlier this year, the City Council looked at some general discussions about basic meeting protocols, and at that meeting, they asked the Legislative Affairs Committee to review the rules of procedure for potential amendments. We have had five meetings to go over those edits, and in addition to that, I have been working with the city attorney to do a little bit more tweaking to the the rules of procedures since the last committee meeting. So your agenda bill does highlight a lot of the changes that were proposed in general. A lot of them were reformatting and some grammar, rearranging sections for ease of reference. There are a few specific decision points that we would like to discuss with council and get direction so that we can hopefully move this forward and potentially adopt the new rules of procedures at your next meeting so we can begin twenty twenty-three under the new rules. So unless council wants me to review every bullet in the agenda bill, I was planning to just go straight to the the decision points that are highlighted in your agenda bill. The first is related to language in the rules related to authorizing changes of pre-approved items such as contracts, ordinances, and resolution. And the simple question is, is council okay with the language related to those?
All right, thank you. So we're looking at the first item on the list. I do see that Councilmember Gamble has
For the second item.
That Councilmember Gamble is for the second item. Does anybody have anything for the first item? Does council have any objection to the proposed revisions? All right, I'm not hearing any objections. Turning to the clerk.
Thank you very much.
Is good. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the second bullet. Go ahead.
Great. The next item that is a decision point for council is related to removing the voting option for abstentions. I will note, I'm gonna go to that page. If you're following along, it is on page seventeen of the new revised version. It is the the wording is that council members are expected to vote on all items except those for which they have been disqualified disqualified from participation pursuant to section fourteen point three, which I will say is related to appearance of fairness and conflict of interest. Any council member who abstains from voting without being so disqualified shall be deemed to have voted in the negative on that item.
And so I hear two things there. One is, is council okay with removing abstentions, and two, if if abstentions are kept or in the event that somebody does abstain, is council wanting to count the abstention as a negative, a neutral, or a positive?
Correct.
All right. So if we could deal with the, or rather deliberate on the first item, is council okay with removing abstentions, and then we'll deal, then we'll deliberate on the second item. And Councilmember Gamble had his light on first, so I'm gonna go ahead and acknowledge him. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not in favor of removing that. There was a lot of discussion that went into that. And there's some history to there. It's the reason, I mean, I I feel like it means it's it's time and not just on a bullet where we're saying, hey, okay, can we take it out? It's, you know, on this vote, because there's a there's a there's a history behind the reason of that that stems even before some of us were on council. I think it's amendable. Yay, we want to force a vote, a yea or nay on something, but it's not in the past, you didn't always get all of the facts you needed as a voting council member to make the vote, and you were forced to vote in the moment. And so now you're going on the record as a as a yea or nay, and you might not even have all the facts, even though you may have asked for them. So your only other options was because that would be used against you, by the way. If you vote, if you vote no, and you're like, well, I didn't know, right? Was that you had to get up and walk out. That's the only option that you had. So by using an abstention, it's very rarely used. I get that, but it typically is around heated you know, type of stuff where stuff gets thrown on the end. I mean, there was just, there's a lot of discussion before we just willy-nilly pick it off. I'd like to review the reason why we put it on and and present all of that for so that those can see it and not just, well, hey, it's not that big a deal. That's my two cents.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Hanford, you are next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna ask clerk Wykoff, instead of page numbers, could you please give us the five point one point? Because the page numbers are not matching up with my computer anyway.
So you're looking for the section number?
Correct.
So for the for the new version that is clean without track changes, the new section is fourteen point two.
Getting there.
We could hum the Jeopardy tune if you like.
That wouldn't help.
For people in the attendees list, we're just, we're just pulling up the the information on on the computer right now.
I don't think so either.
I can also pull it up on the screen, so.
Councilmember Hanford and councilmembers will go ahead and we'll pull up that section on the screen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And and council, as the requested action is, we are as you requested action is, we are looking at discussion this evening, and so we're also looking for a direction from the council on what your next steps will be.
Fourteen.
All right. We have the section up on the screen right now. Is that correct? Fourteen?
Can you see it?
Yep, is it fourteen?
Point two.
Fourteen point two. If you could zoom back a little bit so that, or there you go. Thank you. All right. So the the section in question right now is fourteen point two. It's on your screen. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
So, Councilmember Gamble, you brought up an interesting point that I am not recalling in experiencing. I'm recalling I'm recalling in the past where for whatever reason, councilor didn't want to make a decision, didn't want to vote. Not not because there wasn't all the facts, or there weren't. So I could be not recalling correctly, but you bring up excellent question, so. Sure.
Sometimes the facts are presented during the meeting.
Oh, I know if that's, yeah.
So you're
Yeah.
And we spent time researching that same.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Oh, that's all for now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And for, we'll just go ahead and keep going. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
My question about this, I I do think I gave it a lot of thought today, and I guess my question is, why was change suggested? What is our goal here?
Okay, so one of the committee members can can answer that. I'm gonna go ahead and go to Councilmember Scarborough, and if one of the committee members would like to answer that, go ahead and hit your hit your mic. Councilmember Scarborough has taken himself off, so if one of the committee members, I'm sorry, Councilmembers. Well, Councilmember Scarborough is gonna call on you next. So Councilmember Kenny's asked a question. If somebody on the committee would like to respond to that, go ahead and hit your microphone. But I'm gonna go ahead and turn to you, Councilmember Scarborough, unless you wanna wait for somebody. Okay. Okay, so Councilmember Kenny, your your question is out there for a committee member to respond to. Councilmember Scarborough, the reason why I'm confused is your light got turned off, so Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead. No, no, don't don't touch it. Okay, I just put it on.
Okay, I remember the discussion we had probably four or five years ago on the subject, and I I agree with Councilman Gamble that it was, you had two options, either you voted yes or no, or you walked out of the room, and I think walking out of the room is worse than abstaining. And abstention was put in so people could abstain and ask for more information so they could make an informed decision. I don't remember us having a discussion at that time about an abstention vote being a yes, no, or neutral. And as stated in here, it appears that it's viewed as a negative or a no vote. I think if if we want to retain it, do we want to think about retaining it as neutral? Not a yes, not a no. It's just specifically because we don't have enough information yet to make an informed decision. Therefore, that's why a councilman may not want to vote for it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. So again, to avoid blending the two issues, it sounds like there's an interest in discussing the issue of abstentions a little bit more. I I do know that in Robert's Rules of Order, I was gonna say procedure for some reason, you have the ability, if you don't have enough information before you either before or after a motion is made, you can you can move to table, taking action on something. And so I would acknowledge that, to Councilmember Gamble's point, there may have been other circumstances also that I'm aware of more recently. But you you do have the ability, if you don't feel that you've got the information, to move to table. A motion to table then takes precedent over the standing motion. So if Heather has moved to approve something and Tammy seconded it, Jason then says, I moved to table, explains that we need more information. I just heard public comment this evening, or staff said something, or you triggered something in deliberation. You have the ability to move to table, and then it just takes a second to table it, and then that supersedes the motion. If the if the majority of the council votes in favor of tabling, then that motion still exists, but it's tabled to another date. So that's that's one option that you have. One of the things that we can do is we can look at having this come back for for more discussion, if you like. That's something that Councilmember Gamble shared. And staff can certainly come forward with some of those options that, you know, just to clarify, if you don't have enough information right now and time is not of the essence, you have the You have the ability to convince your colleagues to, even after a motion is made, to move to table. So that's, that's one thing that maybe staff could talk about in a, in another meeting if, if that's something of interest. You have your light on, did I turn it on, or?
No, it's still on, but I was gonna say lay the table or tabling the item is already in your council rules of procedure, so. That is definitely an option that you have.
Yeah. Right, so I think everybody heard that, that the move to table, which is in Roberts, is also in your rules of procedure. And so you have that option to table. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn to Councilmember Campbell and again, before I do. One of the other things that Councilmember Scarborough brought up was abstentions equals no, yes, or neutral. I think again, I'd like to separate that for right now, just because this other itemism is, is a separate item in and of itself, that's okay. Alright, go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
Two things, I still don't think we answered the question, which is why? What's the reason? Cause it's in our rules of procedure now where you can, you can abstain, so I don't understand where this is coming from. Yeah, so we need to answer that and then two. That's always been an option to table, but that's only if it, if it doesn't pass, you're right back where you started. So that to me does, we discussed that when we put that in, in the first place, so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Campbell. And Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
Yeah, I am on the committee and I am actually the one who asked that we take abstention from. The vote, because I do believe that we are here to make a decision and that move to table is exactly what we are. Now demonstrating by tonight saying, let's bring it back for more discussion, because that does take precedence over. You walking out and saying, I'm not gonna vote for this. So, and I, I do believe that we, we, by putting our name in the ring way back in May. We have said we are, we are geared up to make these decisions and if you don't think that staff has given you. Proper information, then that's when you say, we're not ready for this, let's table it, so.
Thank you. Anything further, Councilmember Foulter?
No, but I look forward to my other committee members chiming in on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm another committee member. I am. And so we, we talked about that, I'm in agreement with Heather. Like I said, from my recollection. The only time I remember is when we talked about this abstaining. I, I am fairly confident that I voted against the whole abstention option because of the fact what Heather just said. And so. That's just my opinion, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher, are you on the committee as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell, you had your light on next, is it okay if we hear from Councilmember Fisher and then we'll come back to you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So yeah, I am also on that committee and we did talk about this in length and felt that yes, we are, we are here to make decisions. And there is a way, an avenue for us to table this and ask for more information is what was discussed earlier, so. I am in agreement of, of moving forward with just the table procedure and us making decisions, yea or nay.
Alright, thank you very much, Councilmember Fisher. I'm gonna go ahead and turn now to Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad you guys talked about it at length, that's good. Did we review the reason why we went there in the first place? Was that vote reviewed or the discussion or the record pulled for the committee to review when you guys reviewed this?
Councilmember Fisher, Hanford, or Foulter? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Discussion. No, no, did we, did you pull the, the record or like the discussion on it, the reasons why we went to it?
Councilmember Campbell, you still have the floor?
Yeah, no, I mean, I would. I would ask that the committee at least pull the record of the original, why we went down that, that road. Cause I can argue just right alongside you guys on, on the, on the other, but there's many different reasons, you know, why. In, including if you're coming just back from a vacation, then you probably shouldn't come to the meeting. If you haven't read everything and you're up on everything, cause you could find yourself in that situation, then you're forced to vote, you have no option. So you probably shouldn't come, should come to the following, the following week and not participate. There's, there's a lot that goes, that goes into that, that you don't, that you don't think about.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn to Clerk Wykoff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I did wanna point out one thing in this, the second sentence of this. Provision that we're reviewing does say any councilman, council member who abstains from voting. So it, it is not, the rules are not written as such that we are. Disallowing, like you're not allowed to abstain. It is saying that you're expected to vote on all items except what you're disqualified for. But then the second sentence does say any member who abstains from voting. And then what that result of the abstention would be. So I don't know if that satisfies any of the comments or not.
So if, if I remember the conversation on this and Clerk Wykoff, if you could correct me if I'm wrong. I, I think one of the rec, the realizations is that. You are each independently elected officials, you have the ability to not vote on a matter. That means you can walk out of the room or you can just say on the record you abstain. This here, it says council members are expected to vote on all items, so it's setting an expectation. They are able to abstain, I don't think that there's anything in state law that compels them to vote yes or no. And that's why the second, that's why the sentence is written that you are expected to vote on all items. And then the second sentence is there that identifies that if you do abstain, that that's what the issue is. Correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Alright, and before I move off of that, Zach, do you have anything further to add on what I've just said? I wanna make certain I got that right.
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I believe your comments are accurate. I mean, I don't believe the council can, can compel its members to vote on a particular matter. The thrust of the proposed revision to your rules of procedure in this regard. Are, as Ms. Wykoff indicated, to present a, a strong statement of encouragement to that effect. And also to clarify the, the practical and legal result of, of, of a purported abstention. Which under the current draft of the rules would be counted as a negative vote.
So the way that I would understand with fourteen point two if adopted, let's only reference the first sentence, cause the second sentence is another discussion item. If somebody chose to abstain, they would need to so state, I wouldn't call all in favor, all opposed, I would not say then abstention. So it would be the mayor's expectation that you would state during deliberation or after the, the vote is called that you abstain. That'll be the second item, yeah, I think that's the second item we need to discuss. So I do have a number of lights on, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Councilmember Fisher and again, I think we need to talk about the second sentence. Because I think that's important for members to agree on whether it's negative, neutral, or, or positive if you abstain. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yes, just to reiterate, we have the ability to table this and, and ask for more information, study more information. This has been, this discussion was going on for quite some time. Very long time before I actually went on vacation. And while on vacation, I still look at my city emails and say a prize of all of the things that are going on with my position here, so. Again, I am for going with the table part of this. We can ask for more information and then we are here to make decisions when the time comes.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Okay, I, I think you clarified part of it there when you said. What you're saying here is you're not gonna call for abstention.
That, that's correct.
But if a council member wants to abstain, they make it known at that time that they are abstaining from that vote. And that means you're not voting. I think it, it warrants discussion if that's going to be. I mean, either way, whether you have is call for an abstention or you vote to abstain. That it, it's still to me does not need to be in the negative because you were abstaining. Or the positive, which is, it should be, no vote is neutral. Because you don't have sufficient information that you feel you need to make an informed decision on the vote, so. That would be my drug.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
I'm done.
Okay, I don't know how I got you on there again. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
I think that we all do actually agree on this and because, yes, the, the options as stated before are. You know, there's a first, there's a second, if you feel that you are not ready to vote on that right there during that discussion time, that's when you say. I don't feel like I have enough information on this, I'm going to be abstaining, that is never taken away from you, it's just a matter of not listening to the person who is. Running the meeting, throw that in as one of the counts at the end. So you have the, you have the opportunity to, to redirect that vote by saying, I wanna table this. You have the opportunity to, at that point of discussion, say. I wanna, I'm going to be abstaining, you've got essentially two exits right there, you are not forced onto the freeway. So I think that we are actually all agreeing this and in deference to the tabling option, I'm saying we can definitely. Come back to this later if you want, but those rights, those options are not being taken away by this proposed wording. And, yeah, I, the other option, which is the, the second topic we're gonna be discussing, I'm looking forward to that, that discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jody, I'm sorry Clerk Wykoff, could you go back to the slideshow for the meeting real quick? I just wanna take a look at something real quick. Okay, so we, so I, I probably could have better, done a better job of just framing this. The, the question is, is, is the council okay with removing abstentions? Because it says you're expected to, to vote. Really what we're talking about here is, i- is the council okay with the statement that you are expected to vote in the affirmative or negative? And, and, and I think that that's what the question is and that I, the mayor wouldn't be calling for. For any abstentions, rather somebody would speak up, so I'm sorry if, you know, I could have been more clear on that. Alright, let's go ahead and go to Councilmember Kenny and Councilmember Davis, I haven't heard from you yet. If you'd like to pop your light on, we'd love to hear from you on this too. Don't feel obligated though. Okay, you know, Councilmember Kenny, I haven't heard from Councilmember Davis yet. Do you mind if I take you out right here from Councilmember Davis? Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Davis, go ahead. Oh geez, yeah, that's because I have Kenny red right now, go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
So I, I'm trying to remember all the details of this, but I think. One of the things that I'm concerned about is. If I. The abstention is, is a very rare deal, I, I get, that's a given. But if I, if I feel that I need to abstain. If you ask for yays and I don't say yea. Then you ask for nays and I don't say nay. Is it counted as a yea or a nay? It's counted as a, it's counted as a yea, right?
No.
No, if I abstain.
If I don't hear, if I don't hear anything, to your point, if I don't hear anything, then I understand that it's a unanimous vote.
Right.
But what we're saying here to clarify, and maybe it needs to be added into this, that, that you're expected to vote.
Right.
If you choose to abstain, the council member needs to say at some point in time. And so a couple ways that could happen, one is that the council member during deliberation could say, Mayor. Please call for abstentions, I, I think I'm going to abstain on this. In which case the mayor can say all in favor, all opposed, abstentions. The other thing is that the council member could just say abstain after all in favor, all opposed. And then the council member could just say during the all opposed, abstain. And that's gonna stand out, cause it rarely happens, at least today.
Okay, so but then it says here, any council member who abstains from voting.
That's the second part.
Being so disqualified is a nay.
Right, so that's the second part, that's the second issue we wanna come back and talk about.
So those, those two, that's what throws me off and it is, if I don't want it to count as a yea. And I don't want it to count as a nay, what do I do?
Right, so that, that, that's the second, that's the second issue we wanna come back to is, do you, do you want? Do you want them, instead of negative, do you want that to be neutral? And, and so I, I think we come back to that.
That goes to what Councilmember Scarborough was saying, was that. An abstention should be a neutral point, neither yea nor nay.
Okay, so since that's been brought up, is there any objection from any council members about an abstention? Being neutral, not counting against or for. Alright, we have, we have consensus that rather than being negative, it shall be neutral, neither yes nor no. Okay, so I'm providing direction to staff based on my understanding of consensus that they will rework the second sentence. So that a, an abstention shall be neither yes nor no, it'll be neutral. Alright, I'm gonna now turn back to, Councilmember Davis, Davis, did you have anything else? Alright, Councilmember Kenny, you are up next, I'm gonna hit your light, there you go.
I just wanted to say that that's what I wanted, so I'm good. That's exactly what I wanted, I wanted it to not be a negative, I wanted it to be neutral. And so I'm happy with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Hanford, did you have anything further?
If anyone ever comes back from vacation and they haven't had a chance to check emails, cause. I don't check my city email when I go on vacation, I'll be the first to admit. Please, there's nothing wrong, if you come to the Tuesday night meeting and we're talking about something major. To say, to say, Mr. Mayor, I just got back from being out of town, I haven't had a chance to review everything. So I'll be abstaining from this vote, there's nothing wrong with that and there shouldn't be any shame on anyone to ever have to do that. That's my view, sir.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we, we have consensus on the second sentence, so let's go back to the first sentence. Is there, is there a consensus? That the first sentence, the way that it's written is okay. Council members are expected to vote on all items except for those. For which they have been disqualified for, from participation pursuant to section fourteen point three, which is the conflict of interest section, right?
Correct.
Alright, is there any objection to that? Alright, I think we're good as written with the change from negative to being something that shows neutral.
Yeah, we have some language from the previous, so I'll be able to just swap that out.
Alright, thank you very much. So let's go ahead and put back up the slide and go on to the next list item.
So the next one, make sure.
Thank you, everybody, I really appreciate the conversation on it.
So the next item that we are asking council to make a decision on and provide direction on is. Hold on, now I have to go back to it. Is the vacancy section, this is a new section to council. We did not have anything in our rules of procedure related to filling council seats. Unfortunately, in my previous life, I had a lot of experience in that area, so I already had a source to grab from. The committee reviewed and did not have any issues, however, with meeting with the city attorney, we did. Make some changes to that related to the interviews and such. So the two decision points are, who should the proposed interview questions go to? Currently, it is written that they would go, council would email them to the mayor pro tem. Who would review them and pick out two or three questions that each applicant would be asked during the open interviews. The second question is, how should the interview questions be determined? Which goes back to what I was just saying, the mayor pro tem, currently the way it's written, the mayor pro tem takes this list of. Suggested questions from council, picks out the best two or three and then asks those questions during open session. The other option is literally to take all of those questions and randomly pull them out of a hat. take all of those questions and randomly pull them out of a hat at the beginning of the interview process. So I'm just looking for direction on on who the question should go to and how they should be administered.
And this is in lieu of each council member getting one question for a total of seven questions, which could produce a long interview where you have multiple candidates.
Correct.
All right. Council members, we have not had to do this for quite a while. What is your preference? Um, we could certainly have those questions. Well, what is your pressure preference? There's a a draft for you to look at. Uh, can we pull that up on the screen maybe?
Uh, yep, as soon as I can find it.
Council member Gamble, go ahead.
I actually like every council member having the ability to ask a question, to be honest with you.
Can I address that really quick?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Clerk Wykoff.
Sorry to interrupt, but there is another section in the vacancies that does say. Where is it? So, um, right after we receive the applications, um, and close the application period, council members will have the option to attend an informal information meeting with each candidate at City Hall. Such meetings would be scheduled through the city clerk and noticed as required by law. So basically, we would have informal interviews where all council members would be invited to attend if they wanted to. Um, they would be noticed as meetings, uh, for OPMA purposes.
Good. Uh, what does an informal informational interview look like?
So the original draft was, uh, there was an opportunity for council members to individually call the applicants. And there was some concerns about, uh, that potentially looking as if it was a OPMA violation. So Attorney Lella and I reviewed that and came up with a different option for a more informal, uh, type of Q and A session. That you might have like over the phone or something, but it would be in person.
Sort of a meet and greet?
Yeah, kind of a meet and greet type of style.
Would it be formal with somebody sitting down there in the council asking questions? Or it'd be a meet and greet where people walk around and ask, uh, have the ability to ask questions?
I think those logistics could be worked out, but I I would see it as the latter.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, council member Gamble, I think I had hit your mic. Have you already spoken on the topic?
I just like full representation of you're going to be interviewing for someone to add up here that everybody on the record, not informal.
Yeah.
That's me personally.
All right, thank you. Um, council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I also agree. And I I like the idea of having in the open, in the regular council meeting. And like you just said, this hasn't happened for several years. It's been twelve-ish years, eleven-ish years.
I went through this in twenty oh two roughly where I was one of the people interviewed and then when I was a council member, we went through that and I don't remember how the questions came to be, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, given the fact that it's it's kind of a a major it's a major thing to be appointing someone to a council member position. And so I think it's important that every council member up here has the opportunity to ask their question. So, thanks.
All right, um, so is there any objection to each council member being able to come forward with one question? Okay, and I'm hearing that there's a preference in having a a formal interview process. Okay, um, and in the event we have more than three or five people, do you do you want a threshold where if it's more than five people that there's some sort of review process of applications? Like the written applications to to make decisions? Or did you want to risk having twenty people come in with seven questions?
It's currently seven, three is our threshold that in the current.
Oh, we have a threshold already.
We have it. Yeah, we have a a draft for three, um, so.
Okay, so what so I'm I'm hearing them. The consensus is to to have a formal question and answer with each council member coming forward with one question.
So do we want to mix the informal meet and greet that would have happened before that? Okay.
That's what I'm hearing is a consensus, yes.
Okay, and then I guess my only other question following up with that, just so I have clear direction here, is do we still want council to submit their questions to someone? Maybe to make sure that not everybody's planning on asking the same question or, uh, maybe try and get kind of a a broad. I'm trying to think of what I you you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so let's unless there's objection from the council, let's let's have, um, each council member send their question to the clerk so that this is not political with the mayor reviewing it. The clerk will review them and see if the questions are different. Yeah.
Same thing with not wanting to.
Mayor pro tem. Yep. Perfect. All right. Does that take care of everything for this one?
I think so. I will draft some new language and review.
Thanks. Before we move on, um, going back to the abstentions real quick, there was, uh, one more thing that I wanted to see if the council wanted to add one more sentence into that. Remember, there was some question is that if you're going to abstain, what is the process for doing that? So I could have staff draft a sentence in there that says, if you choose to abstain, you should you 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 say abstain when when the vote is called for, uh, for the noes or something like that. Or declared during the discussion portion. Okay. Okay, any objection to that? Okay, so we'll we'll add a sentence to that effect. Thank you.
Already did.
All right, next next slide, uh, list item, uh, cap- council member Hanford, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe the clerk could clarify the statement you just made about down selecting the three candidates.
Oh, yeah, um, let me go back to the section. So right now, the way it reads is that, um, after staff verifies qual- that the applicants are qualified, that's when, um, we would have the informal meeting, which you have opted to remove. Um, if there are three or fewer candidates, we skip to the to the public interviews. If there are three or more, um, we would still in a council meeting, you would go into exec session, discuss the qualifications and then come out and vote by matrix to reduce the number to three candidates. Then at the next council meeting, you would have the public interviews of those three finalists, go into exec session, discuss the qualifications, and again, come out, vote by matrix to come up with a finalist.
That sounds excellent. Thank you.
Any concern with removing shall go into executive session, put down a may? If the if the council just wants to vote, they're they're not required to go into executive session, right?
No, they're not. I can I can change shells to mays.
Any objection with taking shall and making that may so that the council, if they're prepared to vote, they don't need to go into executive session? Okay. All right, whenever you're ready for the next item. Oh, council member Hanford, go ahead. Nope. Oh, it was Chief Jolly. I'm sorry, it was, uh, Director Worthen. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor.
Oh. Attorney Lell, did you have something? Sorry, I I wasn't looking at the video.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to hear in Ms. Wykoff's response regarding the, uh, the discretionary nature of convening an executive session under those circumstances.
Thank you. All right, whenever you're ready, Clerk Wykoff.
Okay. Last one. Okay, um, hold on, I gotta turn my page. Okay, the last item that is a decision point for council is that, as you know, um, we we did, um, propose some changes to, um, match our current practice. And then we are also suggesting some changes to practice. Um, and then in addition to that, we are suggesting some changes to both practice and the procedures. So that is what the second table is in your agenda bill. The one decision point that we would like to discuss is related to public hearings. Currently, the practice is to, um, do a motion vote to close the public testimony and then also a a secondary motion vote to close the public hearing. Uh, the current procedures, uh, both the current current and the proposed procedures are to have the presiding officer, the mayor, uh, in our case, um, either continue the hearing to a time specific or close the hearing. So that is currently what is written. This the other option would be to allow for a non objection and possible motion vote to close a public hearing. So basically, the wording would be that unless council objects, uh, we're going to close the public hearing. That would be kind of the the rhythm of the of the meeting. That makes sense. That makes sense.
Council member Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 last, the latter one, unless anybody objects.
Yeah.
That's the one I need to. I mean, I I get, I mean, it is a little cumbersome type of deal, but I understand the intention of why there is a motion is so that any one person that's presiding over it can shut down discussion or shut down public when the council wants to hear more. So I would want to make sure that that is still a safeguard in the process that if you have a ma- uh, you know, this goes.
Oh.
Yeah, beyond this is future. Yeah, this is all that type of stuff, because this is not you. By any stretch of the imagination.
I was thinking the same thing with the single two, so.
But I I just, I would not be okay with changing it. We're just because it could be the mayor pro tem, the mayor pro tem presiding, they can say, no, we're done. Uh, if it's worded in that other way, so.
Okay. Um, is there any objection? They're going with option two, which would be that, uh, the presiding officer says unless there's objection, uh, we will now close the public hearing, pause, no objection. So then the the person says it is now.
Close.
Close.
Or continue.
Insert verb here.
Yeah.
Okay, any objection to that? Nope. All right, um, going down to lights then. Thank you, council member Gamble. Council member Scarborough, you're next. Go ahead.
Is it is the intent to remove the, is it cumbersome to re- uh, close the public testimony and then close the public hearing? And we're trying to do it in one step? Is that what we're trying to achieve here? I guess I'm not.
Yes, I I think that was the intent of the committee. Um, when we were talking about it at committee, nobody could remember exactly why we started doing it the way we're doing it. And even the current rules of procedure say that the presiding officer will close it. So we were trying to and I I'll ask council if anybody here remembers why, but, um, I think that might get to what council member Gamble was saying.
We were doing it. Um, so the, uh, just just history going back to oh three again, um, we a- and I've worked in different jurisdictions. I have never worked in a jurisdiction to my recollection where there was closing public testimony and then closing the public hearing. Um, I don't understand why Monroe's done it, but my recollection was this is how I was doing it in oh three, closing the public testimony portion, and then closing the public hearing always happened right after that. So it was kind of like an algebra problem with parentheses and brackets. I I, you know, um, yeah, yeah, the the same thing also, just a different item. I don't mean to cause a squirrel, but first reading and second reading. I I I I worked at the county for fourteen years. There was no first reading and second reading. You went ahead and you made a decision. If the council wanted to, they continued, uh, to another date. Um, so for me, you know, for me, I I don't understand the the history on this. Because to me, a public hearing is the testimony. That's the essence of a public hearing is testimony. Um, and then you take action once you close the public hearing. Anyway, anything else, Jody?
The only thing I was going to mention too is just, um, that the flow of the count of the public carings might, you might notice a a slight change because we're we're, um, Attorney Lell helped draft some language to give us the order of, um, business for public carings and stuff. So you might notice a slight tweak to it. We're going to help the mayor with, um, getting some scripts and and procedures set out for him. So we might add an appendix to the rules of procedure that will strictly be that script and everything for, so we have it for future reference.
All right, um, and before we move off of that, Zach, do you have anything else to add on the, because I know that this can get into a a legal framework. Do you have any concerns with, um, obviously you reviewed this, but just I want to hear from you that you you have no concerns about consolidating public testimony into public hearing and just closing a public hearing? Go ahead.
I don't. This is a matter for the council's local discretion. And if you want to expedite to the process through the mechanism that's been proposed in the uh, rule amendment, certainly within your discretion to do that.
Thank you, Zach. All right, um, council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just was going to say I totally agree with the council member Gamble said about the option two. Uh, a perfect example is tonight where staff recommended that the, uh, public hearing get extended. And if someone in charge decided no, then they could just say, all right, we're done.
Yep.
So, uh, and since you brought up the first and second readings, I remember that. I remember why it hey, why those got instituted, so we could talk about that another time.
Again, I I had brought it up with the with the group in committee, uh, there, um, again, I don't know that it's a legal requirement in the state of Washington to have a first and second reading. And if you if the council or a future council ever wanted to under current rules, you could certainly just go with with one reading and take action without having to go first and second. Um, the ordinances are are published, so people have the opportunity to review them. They come in, they give public testimony or written testimony, just like tonight. You get written testimony, you feel you need more information. The council continue can continue a public hearing to another date, get more information, and provide direction to do amendments to ordinances and bring them back, reopen public hearings. There's a lot of process that allows you to to make adjustments if you want to. And so a first reading and then a second reading. When ninety-five percent of the time, you just have an ordinance with very few comments, you're you're creating more work for people. And, um, so I just offer that. If there is a particular situation like land use actions, maybe you should have a first and second. Um, if state law doesn't already require it, you know, there 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 are some things there, but again, this these are council's rules of procedure. I just bring it up right now because it is something I've noticed that's different in this jurisdiction than other places I've worked, and it would create some efficiencies, so.
I just brought it up because I were specifically, there were lots of reasons why we have it in place.
Okay.
So I'd be definitely interested to talk to other council members if you need to go in, but I can give you all sorts of examples.
All right, thank you. Uh, at this point in time, uh, staff's not doing anything with that, so the committee wasn't interested. I again, I apologize to the staff for the squirrel, uh, coming. All right, uh, anything further, council member Hanford?
Nope, that's it.
All right, anything else from any of the council members? All right, so we we have our direction then. Uh, staff will be making some adjustments to this based on the uh, consensus that I've summarized, and this will be back for council's consideration next week or in January. Okay. All right, thank you very much, uh, clerk. Thank you very much, council members. And we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which I've got to find. And that's item seven point seven, the twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. And I turn to administrative administrator White. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the issue in front of the council is to review and approve the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda. The agenda was presented and staff received feedback from our Economic Development Advisory Board and from our Community Human Services Advisory Board. Um, we incorporated feedback also from our legislators from the twelfth Legislative District. We went over this um, with them when they, uh, came and spoke with the city council, uh, both the representatives and Senator Hawkins. Uh, what I think was surprising, uh, for this year was both the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Community Human Services Advisory Board placed an emphasis on finishing five two two. Uh, in addition, the Community Human Services Advisory Board also wanted to place an emphasis on, um, our mobile mental health initiative. So at this point, um, we are just, uh, looking for any additional feedback that, uh, members of the council might have. Otherwise, we are asking the council for approval of the legislative priorities. Just as a reminder, the legislative session begins on January tenth. It is a long session, which means that we will be looking at a budget, and we do have a, um, one point two million dollar capital budget request, um, for our, um, And we do have a, um, $1.2 million capital budget request, um, for our, um, therapeutic court, for the construction of the therapeutic court. So with that, I can answer any questions that council might have.
Are there any questions or a motion to approve the 2023 legislative priorities? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
As someone who had to drive into Seattle for work today and was on five twenty two, it took me longer to get from Monroe to Paradise Lake Road on five twenty two as it did to take me the rest of the way on four oh five. So that is a huge priority for us, and I'm very happy to see it listed as one of our 2023 legislative priorities. And I'm happy to make a motion if anyone is, unless anyone wants to, okay. I move to approve the 2023 legislative priorities.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the 2023 legislative priorities, which is a request to action a new business item number seven point seven. Any discussion on the motion from council? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that'd be councilmember reports. We'll start off with councilmember, um, Kenny, since our light's still on. Councilmember Kenny?
Perfect. That worked out.
All right. Uh, last Wednesday, we had a P three committee meeting with, uh, councilmembers Fisher and Davis, and, uh, it was very, very interesting meeting and good to see everybody after a hiatus of that committee. Uh, also, I'd like to let everyone in the room know, especially council, that we have an open house at the Monroe Historical Society this coming Saturday from one to three. We'll have treats, warm drinks, and I'll be playing our vintage piano. Be playing Christmas carols on the piano that came from Avalon Theater, our very first theater in Monroe. It's in our museum. So come down if you're downtown shopping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saturday, one to three museum. And that's.
East Maine, right across the street from seven eleven. Hope to see you there. You can watch me make all sorts of errors in my piano playing.
Thank you, councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you'll have to excuse me. I'm just entering in the historical society sing along. So last Thursday, we met, uh, the Legislative Affairs Committee. Miss Knight just went over the things that we talked about, so. Uh, and then it was great to see several of you there at the, uh, Christmas tree lighting downtown. And it looks really good. So thank you, uh, city staff for making the lights come on when the, everybody counted down to three, two, one. And, uh, I think that's it. Thank.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I went up to Light up Monroe. Uh, it was always a great community event. Love that. Um, attended Legislative Affairs Committee meeting. I didn't miss any of those. Um, did the P three and also, um, public safety this week.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Also attended the, the lighting of the tree, and it was a great event. Kind of cold, but, uh, everybody was bundled up and looked like it should be Christmas. It was very nice. I have a question on the three letters that were presented tonight. Uh, is there a time when we are going to have some sort of get together and or briefing on these people's concern about our temporary uh, ordinance that we've passed? Because I'm not sure I'm understanding this, this first letter by.
Councilmember Scarborough, um, I'll have, uh, planner, uh, planning manager Turtle Lo respond to your question.
We'll have what?
Go ahead.
So that is why we asked that the public hearing be continued so you all and staff could review the comments provided. And so we can also provide information back to you in response to the letters. So at your next meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock, the public hearing was extended.
Okay. The letters that you, that you refer to that speak to these letters, are we going to get them this week? So we'll know what to think about next Tuesday? Because I, what I'm asking for, what I'm hearing you say is next Tuesday.
Councilmember Scarborough, just a second. Um, Deborah?
I think there's some confusion. The letters that, um, manager Turbo Low is referring to are the ones you currently have. Those are the ones that have been distributed to you. So we just received those this evening.
Yeah.
And we'll, we will be coming back with further findings of fact in response to those letters following the public hearing next week.
And that'll be part of your packet on Friday.
Correct.
Okay. And if you've got other questions, we can cer- uh, certainly follow up. Anything for the councilmember Scarborough?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
All right. So geez, it seems like forever ago. When was the mega mixer? Was that the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tended the mega mixer on the seventeenth, and, uh, I was bummed I missed the, uh, um, the tree lighting, but, uh, my daughter was home, um, from college, so. Uh, we were, we were out on the town with her special request because apparently they don't have good seafood over there on the east side. So we were, uh, partaking in that, but, uh, I saw lots of pictures and, and the reason why I bring it up is because I, I do think, I'm going to give a shout out to our executive director, uh, on the chamber, Janelle Drews is, is doing a fantastic job. The, uh, uh, the mega mixer was very well attended, represented by all chambers, um, you know, in the valley and up to Marysville. I was, I was pleasantly surprised on the, uh, on the attendance for that, and people were showing up all the way to the very, very end. People were coming in. Uh, so it was, it was great. A lot of representation from a, a lot of different businesses and, uh, some good prizes were, were given out, um, to award prizes. But yeah, it was, it was really good. And I just, I love seeing, uh, our, our chamber, um, leading the way and being vibrant and helping out our, our, our businesses here in town. So great event, both of them.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Fulcher. Go ahead.
Um, I was also at the mega mixer shortly that night, but the night before, we, I don't know if we had a chance to talk about it, but we did actually graduate Citizens Academy. Yay.
That's right. Yeah, that was a lot of fun. I just, I thank Chief Jolly and actually the whole crew that was there every single Wednesday. It was fantastic. Um, I also missed the light up because, you know, evening church was a lot of fun too, so. Um, and I'm just going to say, good job with the, um, public works, getting the streets cleared and being very responsive to the whole snow incident we had lately. So, um, good job as usual. That is all. Thank you. Yep.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, we're now going to go to staff and department reports and right, yes, staff and department reports, and I'm going to go to Director Hassard. Director Hassard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just for those that are eagle eyed, the report, the finance report that's in your packet is October. November's is not yet available. And just a reminder, you don't get a December report because that's called the annual report when that is done. Um, one thing I did want to bring to your attention though is that as we are taking a look at the trending with specifically sales taxes and REIT, it is slowing down as was expected. Um, you haven't seen November yet, but REIT numbers for November look like what we had received back in 2014 and 15. Um, now one month does not make a trend, and for the year, we're still way ahead. Um, but we will keep a close eye on that. And we did take that into account, if you remember, as we were doing and, uh, compiling the biennial budget. So, um, just wanted to just bring that to your attention. Um, so when you do see that, you're not surprised. Outside of that, Mr. Mayor, I, the, the reports in the packet, and I'm available if there are questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hassard? Okay, great. Uh, the next report that we have then is from Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our report is contained within your packet. The one thing I would want to point out is of note is Detective Scott Cornish is retiring from our department and taking a medical retirement, and we'll miss him greatly. He, he was a hard charger and a great person to be around, and we wish him well in, in the future and hope to keep in contact with him. So a lot of thanks to him, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Chief Jolly. Uh, any questions for Chief Jolly? I looked down and I saw Lance, you, you, when I said any questions for Chief Jolly, you, you hit your microphone. So did you have a question for Chief Jolly? That was just funny. The timing was great. Uh, great. Direct, Director Bailey, go ahead.
How they gives to mayor members council. Um, three, three things that I wanted to point out in the community development report, which is in your packet. Uh, one, which I would encourage you to look at the photos, they're pretty dramatic of the, what we call the Blakely House, which was a project that actually started as a code enforcement, um, case with the city back in 2017. Uh, started to, uh, fix that house up. It was ultimately sold, and the new owner has, um, done a full remodel. It's, it's pretty dramatic change. And, uh, the, the, um, building department issued the final inspection, uh, just this month. So the new photos of, of it actually have snow. The, um, the, the second thing I wanted to point out was, um, or let the council know, um, it brought up the, the conditional use, uh, review for ideal option, which was the, uh, uh, addiction treatment outpatient treatment facility that was, uh, proposed to be located on Main Street. They, we did hold the public hearing. The hearing examiner approved it, and the, um, appeal period has expired, so that is, um, a, a full approval, and they'll be moving forward, I, I imagine soon to, to open that up. And the third is a staffing update. Uh, we have hired a permit tech, um, who is coming to us from the city of Sammamish. And he will be starting when community development next Monday.
Thank you very much. Any questions for, uh, for Director Bailey? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, councilmember Kenny.
Sorry about that. I was a little late on the draw there. So, Mr. Bailey, I have a quick question for you about, uh, the Ann Street. They, the two houses, they're, they're combining it, uh, two lots into one lot for that posed, uh, building with uh, retail on the bottom and apartments on the top. Is that moving forward by the end of the year, or is that going to be pushed off into beginning of 2023?
I suspect based on the, sort of the, have that project has been proceeding that it will be next year.
Okay, thank you.
But just, just, but it is, so it's 16 units of residential with, uh, uh, ground floor, uh, commercial and um, the, the, the applicant has been working with the city. And there's not, there hasn't really been any issues with it. It's just, it's just taken some time to, to get through it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Uh, councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, not really a question, just a comment on five twenty eight South Blakely Street. So, um, that house was way worse than it looks here. Um, and it was a really, a really cool thing to watch in a partnership that kind of formed between city staff, the police department, and the neighborhood to get that whole thing taken care of. Uh, with a long time coming, but all those things do take time. You can't go in and kick people out of property against what we do here in the United States. Um, and it was just a really good example of it might take kind of a long time, but the system actually really did work in that instance. Um, be patient and stay on top of it and get involved in your community and get involved in your neighborhood. The city is more than happy to help, so is the police department. So I'm, I'm glad to see that come around, and there is a family that is moving in there um, in a couple of months, and they're super, super excited to have new neighbors, so.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Director Bailey? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on now to item nine point four. This is the Economic Development November 2022 report. And I'm going to turn, I think, to Director Worthen for that. Is that correct? Go ahead, Director Worthen.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Christian was getting on an airplane. The report is in your packet. I will pull out one thing because he asked me to. Uh, we, in 2023, the Monroe Business Survey, uh, will start this month. Uh, the business survey will be released in conjunction with the branding materials provided by J Ray. Highlights of the survey include workforce development, business recruitment, retention, and expansion. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to get those to Tyler when he returns.
Does anybody have any questions for Tyler? All right. Thank you very much, Director Worthen. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on then to item number 10, 10.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda Administrator Knight. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, just bringing to council's attention that next Tuesday will be our last meeting of the month. We have canceled the Council Legislative Affairs Committee because the council approved the legislative agenda this evening. Uh, looking forward then, uh, you can see that there are a number of items planned on the consent agenda. I'm not going to go through them because it's a lengthy list. A lot of things coming back to you for a second reading before the end of the year, and then closing out a number of capital projects and, um, moving those on, um, through the final, uh, approval process for financing those. We do have, uh, obviously coming back to you under unfinished business, uh, adopting the amended council rules of procedure following your discussion this evening, and then the regular reports. Uh, we will have an executive session item for the purchase of property. And then, as mentioned, that is our last meeting, so the meetings on December 20th and December 27th are canceled. And then we will be asking council, uh, next week also to adopt your calendar for 2023, which would include canceling then your first meeting in January, which is on the third. So we're going to bring that calendar, calendar forward to you sooner, um, this year, so we can, uh, have that in place in advance of that cancellation. And that's it for the extended agenda.
Any questions about the Calendu? Okay. Thank you.
Did I say Calen?
You, you, I, I've been adding weird things to words, so.
So be. It's been kind of a long day.
All right. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to 10.2. Um, oh, and, and just for note, I will not, um, I will not be here next week, and so the mayor pro temp will be, uh, facilitating the meeting next week. Yeah. You're stuck with Jason. All right. Go ahead, Deborah, for the next one.
All right. So just a couple of items. Again, looking forward into, uh, 2023, the Association of Washington Cities, their, uh, Legislative Action Days are scheduled for February 15th and 16th in Olympia. So if you are interested, the, uh, the conference opens on December 12th for reservations, so we would love to get you registered for that just as soon as possible. So if you're interested, um, please let Jody Wykoff know, so she can get you on the list, and we can, um, do that next week. For committee assignments for 2023, our rules of procedures, uh, state that committee memberships are set in January. Since we don't have any, uh, any, um, new councilmembers coming on board in January, that's actually something that we could set in place on December 13th if you're interested, uh, which would then allow us to hold committee meetings in January. Typically, you do that selection at the second meeting in January, and our first committee meetings then are held in February. So I don't know that we'll have any actual items for you, um, once you select your committees, but it does allow us for that option if needed.
Is there any objection to having that added to the agenda next week to select committees on the 13th? Right.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, um, last, I also want to add my kudos to the list, um, both for our police department, um, and our public works who had to work over the extended weekend on Thanksgiving and then the day after, uh, when the rest of city staff typically have those days off. And then, of course, uh, to our public works department and police who really work in concert to make sure that our snowplows are, are out there and working, um, when the roads begin to get slick and icy. Uh, I had to take a couple of early morning phone calls, but it was great to know that, um, that cooperative, uh, and collaboration just continues between the two departments. It's really helpful to the community as a whole, as you saw, you know, just from the positive comments that we got back. And then finally, if you haven't seen, um, social media posts, or if you haven't had a chance to drive downtown, um, you should drive down and take a look at the new gateway signs to the historic downtown. Um, I wanted to let council know that, uh, we are planning to light those. We're just getting, um, the power hooked up to them, so both the bases and the tops will be lit. So in the dark days that we're in right now, it'll be, I think, just add something special to the downtown overall. And a big thank you to the members of the Economic Development Advisory Board, councilmember Fulcher and others who participated in putting that together. And then a huge thank you to, um, Scott Peterson and our Public Works Department, who took on that project after we did our fun work and has really had to take the project through to the finish line. These projects look easy, but they are very complicated and require a lot of work on the back end. And Scott's just been doing a really great job at, at getting those signs installed. We've got information signs too. Uh, I've been working closely with Janelle Drews, and she is going to be reaching out to our downtown business owners to talk to them about just what do they want to see on those information signs. Her initial idea is that we will, uh, see, um, the months and then the special events that happen in each one of those months. So people know when to come back and visit us again for special events, you know, plus a map on one side, then. then showing where various locations, our restaurants, and other things in the downtown. So that's a collaboration between the city and the chamber. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the City Administrator Report? I think those signs in the downtown look great, even if they're not lit. Sorry, that was a Christmas Vacation reference. So, okay. The little lights aren't twinkling. All right. So there have been a number of weeks that have gone by since our last council meeting. Great job the chamber did with Light Up Monroe. Wonderful job. A lot of people were there. Great, great, great response on the snow removal. I didn't receive a single complaint. The only email that I received from anybody was, when are you going to come out and plow Brown Road? Yeah, I got that. I got that email on Friday night. And yeah, I got that email on Friday night and copying city staff. I also copied the Public Works Director Kelly Snyder, must have been seven o'clock at night, in my response to the person just explaining that Brown Road is outside city limits. They want to contact the county. Here's the website. And Kelly Snyder got the email and replied right away. And so, you know, that was unfortunate that she was working at seven o'clock on a Friday like I was, but that she was on top of it, and I appreciate that. Also had a meeting with the marriage group last week. Yeah, today's Tuesday. Last week, they were talking about what to do with the opioid settlement money. There was an interest in pooling resources together and some discussion around that. If you remember, we're looking at maybe $25,000 a year for less than $25,000 a year, less than $20,000 a year. $17,000 a year for fifteen years. And one of the things that I said was that it was very important to me, and I think to our council, that the financial resources, which are not a lot, come back to our community. So I did explain to them that while I am not against doing things on a regional basis, that we needed to be able to demonstrate that if there is any pooling of resources, that we still have a benefit here in Monroe. And whatever it is that the county and a couple other cities might come forward with a recommendation on, that'll be forwarded to you. But I did speak somewhat passionately on yeah, I see the smirk. I did speak somewhat passionately about, hey, I support regional efforts, and we need to make certain that things come back here to Monroe. So I, just sharing that with you, at some point, we'll have some more information on that. And again, I think that I relayed the council sentiments in addition to mine because I think folks want to see benefits back to our community. Let me see, what else did I have? Oh, I am now in the Association of Washington Cities Federal Legislative Priorities Committee. That's a committee of maybe probably fifteen to twenty elected officials. So it's not like I'm the only one. And they're working on the legislative priorities for Washington Cities. A lot of their priorities are very similar to our priorities, although they're longer and they have more words associated with them. But I think they had about a two-page or so list. And so that should be sent out in a final version to the AWC members, including all the elected officials in the next couple of weeks. So if you have any questions about that at any point, feel free to reach out to me. I don't want to spend too much time on it in the meeting tonight because it could take more time. Also had a meeting with Senator Murray's staff on Wednesday last week. Talked a little bit about a letter that we had sent expressing concern about the, was it the Defense Authorization Act that had some requirements related to finances? And so we had a conversation with them, and they have a different interpretation of the code section than the Finance Officers Association may have. And yeah, so there are a number of city organizations that have a different point of view than other folks. And so we are encouraging those associations to get comments to our representatives in DC about how they feel that the language should be changed. And so that was the nature of that conversation. So we're going to relay that information to those organizations. And then this week, so far, we had a meeting this morning with the Economic Alliance in Snohomish County. They had a meeting with what's called Snow Code. I forget what the C O D E stands for, but I think the D and the E refer to diversity and equity. It was a meeting held in Edmonds to talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. What I felt was really valuable about this one was that they were talking about showing grace for one another. And a lot of times when I attend these sorts of things, there is a very polarized approach to these sorts of things. Instead, there was a lot of discussion about meeting people where they are, all groups of people where they are, and just being humble and being just and being kind and learning from one another about what you could be doing differently. Because at the end of the day, I think everybody here wants to love their neighbor and work together with one another. And it's just a matter of learning where there might be harm that we're creating or words we're saying that are hurtful and just learning to do better. So I thought it was a very well-done presentation this morning. And kind of the approach that they were using was similar to the approach that we've been using here, which is just learning to meet people where they are and working together and showing grace for one another. So I was approached at the end of the meeting to see if there was an interest in doing something like that here in Monroe, in the Sky Valley. I thought that it was something that is a different way to approach things that I thought would be of benefit here. And so I did express an interest in maybe us hosting something at some point, maybe in February or so. And so as I get more information on that, I'll share that with you. And I think that's all that I have for this evening. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, and I'm not going to be here next week. So I am just going to, no, not on the record. Thank you. I'm just going to say, take this moment to express how much I appreciate this council. I interact with a lot of elected officials in different ways in my life. And there are a lot of councils and mayors where there is an inappropriate level of friction. You need to hold this position accountable for things, which you did tonight, like with the whole thing about who closes a public hearing, that kind of stuff, how that's done. And the mayor needs to hold the council accountable also to make certain you're staying in policy and budget and not in operations, right? And it's not to say you can't talk about operations, but that's your main focus, is policy and budget. If the operations are delivering something you don't expect, we come back and look at the policy, and that's how we discuss things. I also see a lot of councils where there's infighting. And this council doesn't have that, and yet you still do your jobs. You still hold this office accountable. This office is still able to hold this group accountable and get things done. And I just so appreciate the fact that this is not a partisan city with the way that we approach things and that we work together. And I feel that when I'm talking to members of the public, that's reflected in the public. They realize that we're not here just causing strife or harm for the sake of doing that. And I so greatly value that. To staff, you know, I said this on Friday to some people that I was able to meet up with on Friday afternoon. You make us successful. And the people that you manage, the people that you lead, make us successful, make our community successful. It's not any elected official that gets on a high horse and gets elected to office and thinks that they're better or the leader or the elected official. It's not that person. It's not us that make us successful. It's you that make us successful, and the people that work for you that make us successful. So whether it's snow removal, or it's making contact with somebody with PD, or it's taking a little extra time where you're dropping off your kid and helping somebody that could have had a really bad outcome that one day, whether it's keeping our finances in balance or making certain that you're helping us follow up with somebody on a development issue that we've had a couple of conversations on, or making certain that the parks are taken care of, following up with planning-related things, helping us hire people and do good, making certain that the Zoom meetings don't crash on us, making certain that the rules of procedure and everything else, keeping our records clean, and then the leadership at the top. I appreciate all the work that all of you do, that each one of you does, that makes our community successful. So it's been a pleasure this year, and I look forward to working with you again in 2023. All right. Okay, with all of that said, I have a bummer. We have an executive session we need to enter into. The time right now is nine o'clock. I'm calling an executive session for fifteen minutes. It's property acquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two point thirty point one ten, subsection one, subsection little B, and potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two point thirty point one ten, subsection one, subsection little I. I will announce extensions as necessary to the clerk, who will announce them both in the lobby and online. We will return to this meeting when we're done. There will be action potentially to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. So session.
For the record, this is Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended ten minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we are now out of executive session. There's no further action required this evening or requested of council. Unless there's objection, we are adjourned. Saying no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.